Two, one. Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Milton Select Board on November twenty first, first, two thousand and twenty-three. Item two is public comment. Just a couple of things at the start. On March seventh of this year, in the case of Barron versus Kalinda, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court ruled that the civility code, the town of Southborough, was unconstitutional and that using a civility code was, quote, forbidden. The quote state, the court stated, although civility, of course, is to be encouraged, it cannot be required. So we cannot require civility, but please accept this as an encouragement of civility in public comment. In that same case, the Supreme Judicial Court found that it was permissible to adopt reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions for public comment, including time limits. This board has adopted such time limits, setting aside a maximum of twenty-one minutes for all public comment and a limit of three minutes per speaker. I understand that consistent and strict enforcement of these limits is important, so I will apologize in advance for strictly enforcing them. I will advise each speaker when they have reached two minutes and thirty seconds, and then at three minutes, I will thank them and move on to the next speaker. I will, I will count the three minutes per speaker, and Mr. Milano will count the twenty-one minutes to make, to make sure we adhere to the limits. You should also know that according to our policy, public comment is not intended to serve as a dialogue, but as an opportunity for the board to hear the views of residents on matters within the board's authority. With that, I will go down the list in order and ask each, each speaker to state their name and their address when they begin. The first speaker in the online list is Nawar Musin. So if we could go ahead with Nawar Musin. Ms. Musin? If you could unmute, we can't hear you right now.
Yes, can you hear me? I'm sorry. Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you now. If you could state your name and address and then begin.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Nawar Musin, and I live at nineteen Low Circle in Milton. Thank you again for taking the time to listen tonight, and I want to extend my thanks to all of the select board members who have been working very hard towards this, the proposal that, that, that I brought up last Tuesday to, to raise the Palestinian flag. My intent was to show unity and solidarity with all of our Milton residents, and, and, and that's how I came into the, to the request. Friday's meeting was a little disappointing because it seemed as though that request was dismissed and/or misinterpreted. So I would just like to reiterate that the, the intent was for it to be uniting, and if, if that was not the case, then the the other, the Israeli flag standing on its own would create division, and that's, my understanding was that it was going to be voted down to, to promote, further promote unity, and thank you to member Aaron Bradley for, for supporting such a, such a proposal. However, nothing was voted on. Just to clarify, one of the statements of the, of, of a few select board members, this proposal was done by private citizens and not by any religious group, and the fact that a religious group was named on Friday was disappointing, misleading, and possibly ill-intentioned, and so I reiterate that it was done by a private citizen, which is me, with three other residents that spoke, who were all three non-Muslims, and again, that was done by a private citizen. The other qualification is the Palestinian flag itself is not a representation of modern-day antisemitism. It was adopted in nineteen sixteen, and any claim otherwise, again, is misleading. And that is why I came to, to clarify again, and I hope that we can resolve this, this matter tonight resolutely and completely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musin. Next in line is Dr. H. Dr. H, if you could state your name and your address, please?
Yes, hi, my name is Hasham Hamoda. I live in four eighty-five Harland Street in Milton. I speak to you as a proud Arab and Muslim-American resident of Milton. Our community is hurting. When we see images of six thousand children being butchered, butchered by the fourth strongest military in the world, probably by the time I finish my three minutes, that'll probably be like seven thousand, and those of them who are lucky enough to survive the shelling are being starved and deprived even of clean water. On Monday, the United Nations, the institution that the world created to resolve conflict, said Gaza is becoming a graveyard for children. But this is not the only reason we're hurting. We were also hurt by our local government in Milton. Instead of focusing on fixing our schools and infrastructure, our elected officials decide to take sides in a foreign war. You issued a statement on November second, everybody can see it on our website, which makes zero mention, zero mention of your residents in Milton who are Palestinian, who are Muslim, who are Arab, or just decent human beings who are hurting by what we all see on our screens, both in Gaza and the West Bank, by the way. In my community, people are asking, do we really belong in Milton? Did you really think that you have much to add to a foreign conflict that no one has been able to resolve in the last seventy-five years? Seventy-five years of conflict. With a three hundred percent rise in Islamophobia in Massachusetts and the rise in antisemitism, you chose to divide our town instead of uniting it. In regards to the flag issue, our town, our town officials are aware of the First Amendment rights in treating all groups the same, whether they agree with them or not. Are you aware of the Supreme Court case in two thousand and twenty, Shirley versus Boston, which the city of Boston lost when it thought it could pick and choose among the flags to float? I implore elected officials to reflect on the harm, the cost to their own residents. You have a chance to remedy some of the harm, and I say just some of the harm, by making an immediate decision to only fly our American flag, and I strongly believe this is the best way to bring unity to Milton. I ask all our voters in our town to watch closely, closely what the select board decision is today. You need to know who in our elected officials votes to divide us and who votes to unite us. I leave you with hope for harmony in Milton, for a free Palestine, and peace in the Middle East and around the world. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. H. Next online is Amel Kimawi, and I apologize if I've put the accent on the wrong syllable. So if we could promote Amel Kimawi. Amal Kimawi, if you unmute and state your name and address, and then go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
Perfect. Thank you, Select Board, for hearing me. My name is Amal Kimawi, and I live at fifty-five Indian Spring Road. I live and work in Milton. Regarding the flag display, I would like to add that I fully appreciate the symbolic significance of flag representing people, their culture, and showing support. I was at the temple gathering in October at the mosque and also this past weekend at the church. It's crucial to acknowledge that since October, the situation has evolved with significant number of human losses, death, and suffering on both sides, the Palestinian and also the Israeli. I think single-side flag could be perceived as taking sides, potentially alienating families from the other side. Our town is wonderfully diverse with family and residents from all different backgrounds with faith, including Middle Eastern, as myself, Muslim and Jewish, causing divisions with our neighbor and friend is the last thing that we want. I'm in favor of displaying the American flag alone, which is already present, and I saw that. We send a powerful message of unity, shared values, and we all in this together, united. It's also important to mention that Palestinian flag is not Hamas flag. It is different. Other options will be having both flags with a peace sign. That also will send a message of empathy and hope and acknowledge the presence of both sides and both communities, and also push for peaceful resolutions. That also will show having both flags there with a peace sign that we're all here together, united. In conclusions, I am advocating for either having both flags together with a peace sign or having just the American flag, and that's all what we're looking for, having united Milton neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kimawi. Thank you very much. Next on the list is Carl L. Tubwui. Tubwui, and I, again, I apologize if I mispronounce it, so please correct me. Carl L. Tubwui, if you, yes, sir.
Yeah, it kicks you out and then brings you back in. Yes, my name is Carl L. Tubwui. I live at thirty-two Squanton Street, Milton. Thank you for having this meeting this evening. So I just wanted to say that Israeli flag has been flying in Milton for a number of weeks now to show support for the Israeli people and in particular for innocent people who were killed in the Hamas attack on October seventh. Since that time, however, another people, the Palestinian people, have been under a relentless and merciless retaliatory attack that has led to a catastrophic and ever-worsening human situation, among people, the majority of whom are not Hamas fighters, but perfectly innocent, non-combatant Palestinian men, women, old people, and most tragically, children, who actually make up almost half the population of Gaza, two point three people in a very small twenty-five-by-five-mile strip of land. One point four million people have been displaced from their homes since then, most of which, most of those homes have been systematically destroyed by the Israeli army. Two weeks ago, there was four, forty-five percent of all of the housing in Gaza had been completely destroyed and laid to waste. So one point four million people are now homeless and have nowhere to return to. With winter setting on, we all have heard and know that they are being systematically denied food, water, electricity, medicine, and fuel. Doctors have been forced to perform surgery, sometimes on children, without anesthesia. Almost fifteen thousand people have been killed up until this point, seventy percent of whom, again, are women and children. If the intent in Milton was to show solidarity for innocent people who have been killed, then the only right and defensible thing to do at this point, in my opinion, is to also show equal solidarity for the innocent lives that have been lost on the Palestinian side. Palestinian lives are as worthy as Israeli lives. Muslim and Christian lives are as worthy as Jewish lives. I think we can all agree on that. I would say going forward, it is probably better for, in the future, for the town of Milton to refrain from weighing in on contentious overseas conflicts, but having chosen in this current conflict to fly the Israeli flag publicly in support of Israeli suffering on October seventh, I demand that the Palestinian flag be flown for the exact same number of days that the Israeli flag has been flown in order to show equal solidarity with the innocent Palestinian lives and in solidarity with the Palestinian people who are currently suffering what has been described by human rights organizations as, quote, "a textbook case of genocide." Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We will now go to the next one on the list is Hoda Al-Tomi. Hoda Al-Tomi, if you, if you unmute yourself, state your name and, if you could state your name.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes. Yes, hi, my name is Dr. Hoda Al-Tomi, and I live at four eighty-five Harland Street in Milton. Dear Select Board members, I just wanted to thank you for taking the time today to respond to the needs of a Milton community, and I want to start off by saying it is possible to feel heartbroken for two different groups of people at the same time. You can be against the killing of innocent Israeli people and innocent Palestinian people and feel sadness at the senseless loss of life at the same time. You can stand against antisemitism and Islamophobia and ideologies that destroy the fabric of our community at the same time. You can do this and stand for the values that are near, dear to our hearts as proud Americans, freedom, justice, unity, and dignity. I appreciate your efforts. It is difficult sometimes to say the right thing and do the right thing without offending someone, but we can at least try, and when faced with a choice, we can always try to be kind to one another. After the last two Select Board meetings, I have to be honest, I was feeling a bit hurt, mostly by the misconception that standing up for Palestinian people is perceived as extreme or antisemitic. I want to point out that even independent organizations, such as the United Nations, Human Rights Watch, Amnesty International, the World Health Organization, even some Israeli human rights organizations have advocated for Palestinian rights. I don't need to add to what has already been said in that matter, but I just wanted to say the Palestinian flag is no less of a representation of the people in Palestine as the Israeli flag is representation of the people in Israel. And what was said about the Palestinian flag possibly being triggering, if you think about it, can be said about any other flag. We thought by presenting the initial idea that perhaps naively, that the unified display of both people can convey that cooperation is not only desirable, but it is essential for a sustainable and peaceful future. Showing one flag can be perceived as taking sides in a very complex geopolitical issue, potentially alienating people who identify with the other side. At this point, there can either be two paths moving forward, either taking them both down or basically have no flag besides the United States flag, or, as Amal said, displaying both with a flag of peace, and that's a beautiful suggestion. As a proud Muslim American.
Dr. Al, thirty seconds.
Okay. As a proud Muslim American, I've experienced my taste of prejudice, and I would not wish that feeling on anyone. I decided to lead my life with love and kindness, and I vow to stand hand in hand with my neighbors and friends and community, whether they're Jewish, Christian, Muslim, or come from any other faith or walk of life. I'm not a politician by nature, but I speak today because I don't want anything to destroy the beautiful fabric of this community, what makes us human beings who care and respect each other.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next on the list is Muna Kay. Nine minutes left. Nine minutes left, okay. Muna Kay, is she the next one? Yeah. Muna Kay, Muna.
You can hear me now, right? You can hear me?
We can hear you. Can you just give your name and address, Muna, and you're off?
Sure. Thank you so much. Stay as, okay, I just want to, should I join as a panelist or as an attendee to ask me?
You're, you're already there, so, so you can just state your name.
Okay, I was just asking you to choose. Okay, all right, thank you.
Can you, can you, can you hear you loud and clear?
Okay, okay, very wonderful. That's great, thank you. Muna Killingback, three fifty-one Atherton Street. I'm here tonight, first of all, thank the Select Board for considering all of our opinions tonight, and to, just to share a little bit about the depth and breadth of Milton's diversity. I, on my dad's side, am a Palestinian Christian with deep and ancient roots in the Holy Land. Palestinian Christians are proud to be descendants of the original Christians in the Holy Land, and were historically the majority populations in Bethlehem, where my grandmother's family is from, and Nazareth, as well as in the Old City of Jerusalem, or they've had significant populations in the Old City of Jerusalem. They have maintained the continuous traditions of Christianity in the Holy Land, and in my bigger family, I also have three cousins who are half-Jewish, also on my dad's side of the family. My family went to Lebanon in nineteen forty-eight to seek safety from the fighting that was occurring, and we're, we're expecting to go back to Palestine, but then, as the State of Israel was founded, the borders were closed, and Palestinian refugees were not allowed to go back home, so they lost their home, despite the fact that UN Security Council Resolution one nine four called for all Palestinian refugees to be able to go back home or be compensated if they chose not to, so that was never fulfilled. My family was very fortunate in being able to obtain Lebanese citizenship, which was rare, but the government at the time was trying to increase the population of, the Christian population. So my family was fortunate in that. So there are also Palestinian Christians in Gaza. There are two churches there. I don't think it's reported very widely, but there's a Catholic church, a Catholic community, and an Orthodox one, and Saint Porfariras, Porfire, sorry, Porfarias, Porfarias built in eleven, it was a church built in eleven fifty, was bombed by Israel on October twentieth and left a large number of people killed and wounded who were sheltering there and damaged the structure of one of these, one of the oldest continuously operating churches on earth. So I also share the concern of other speakers about the impact of this conflict on civilians and the fact that the Select Board has so far only, only decried the impact on one side, one community, although I agree that I share the grief with our, my Jewish neighbors who, who were concerned.
Muna, thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay. All right, well, let's cut to the chase. I think that if you're going to fly the Israeli flag, it's best to also fly the Palestinian flag for the same number of days, and the, the flag of Palestine represents all of the Palestinians, the Muslims, the Christians, and everyone who's not religious, and also there were traditionally always Jewish-Palestinians as well in the past. So I think that the Select Board perhaps should, could not consider, not weigh into it.
Thank you, Muna. Thank you, Muna. Thank you very much. Sorry to cut you off. We're just have to stay within the time limit. That was, that was the town administrator, Muna, not me. But you, but anyone who, anyone who wants to come back on the twenty-eighth, who doesn't even wants to say more, who doesn't get in tonight can certainly come back on the twenty-eighth when we next have public comment, and I think we still have time for more.
Yeah, six minutes.
Six minutes to go, so that's. Sadiq, Sadiq Qasim. So Sadiq Qasim, if you could give your name and address, and then go ahead, please, sir.
Yes, good evening. Thank you to the Select Board for giving me the opportunity. My name is Sadi Qasim. I'm a resident at nineteen Low Circle in Milton, and actually, I'd like to kick it off with a beautiful poem. That was one of Benjamin Franklin's favorite poems. It's a poem from a Persian poet named Sadi, and this poem hangs at the entrance of the United Nations, and Sadi says, "Human beings are body parts, our human beings are members of a whole in creation of one essence and soul. If one member is inflicted with pain, other members uneasy will remain. If you have no sympathy for human pain, the name of human you cannot retain." So I think the act that the Milton Select Board did on October seventh in response to October seventh, the raising of the Israeli flag, was a beautiful gesture in line with acknowledging the pain that was suffered by our brothers and sisters in Israel. And I think the, but, but it's a, it's an incomplete act because there is pain that's being felt by our brothers and sisters on the other side, Palestinian Christians, Palestinian Muslims, Palestinian members of non-belief, and I think the members of Milton have a unique opportunity. All of you are humanitarian in nature. I know that because some of you, as Ms. Musto is, a nurse practitioner, saving humanity, some of you are defending the rights of other individuals, and I think what us as members of the citizenry of Milton are requesting is that by lifting the Palestinian flag, what we're doing is we're acknowledging the universal pain that's being felt across all sides, irrespective of nationality, ethnicity, or, or gender, and we're saying that here in this town of Milton, we universally acknowledge the sentiment of pain, and we want to be a beacon for greater understanding and greater humanity and greater, and greater hope. And so I, I, I trust that this Milton Select Board will, will carry out the right decision, being inspired by the same poem that's inspired one of our founding fathers, Benjamin Franklin. It's a beautiful poem, and I think a real great mandate for us to continue forward, and thank you for the time, and I really appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next is Abdallah. We have some extra time.
Hi, can you see me?
We can see you and hear you. If you could just state, state your full name and your address, please, sir.
I'm Niz Abdallah Hassan. I live in six two one Buha Avenue. I kind of want to give like a different perspective to this whole thing. I'm currently a senior at Milton High School, and I'm very involved with a lot of different things, and many people that I've talked to have kind of started off, I just want to actually take a step back. I want to thank the Milton High School for being really, really kind of open and helpful with many different aspects of my religion. They helped me lead for a Friday prayer every Friday, but I kind of want to kind of just bring up a few points. Everybody mentioned great points, but a few reasons why I feel like the Israeli flag is kind of unjust. Number one, most people currently, and including elected officials, they know that Israel is to blame, blame for most of the stuff. Even the attack on October seventh that was claimed to be by Hamas, which part of it was, everybody accepts that, partially was also by Israel, and everybody is aware of that now. So it's not only fair to say, do you condemn Hamas for the attack on October seventh, but you must also say, do you condemn Israel for the attack on its own people on October seventh? The next thing I want to say is keeping the Israeli flag up and saying that the Palestinian flag is, quote-unquote, "antisemitic" seems like it's very victimizing and manipulative. It, it seems like many kind of Israeli, and I'm not going to say Jewish, because Judaism does not equate to kind of Zionism. I'm friends with a lot of Jewish kids at school, and a lot of them agree that Israel is not a, a fair state and stuff like that. So Israel does not equate to Judaism, and it seems like they're trying to take the benefits of kind of the, 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 the long kind of historic prejudice that was towards Jewish people and use it for their benefit by saying everything was antisemitic, which is not, having the Palestinian flag is just just, and it should be put up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And how much time do we have?
I kind of, minute thirty, a minute thirty.
All right, we have, we have a minute thirty to go, so I'm going to go to the next speaker for the, for that balance of time, Valerie Hansen. And I, I, I do apologize that you have a little bit, because we're getting to the end of the citizen speak, but, but you have a minute and a half, and then you're certainly welcome to come back on the twenty-eighth or any subsequent meeting, but if you can promote Valerie Hansen joining up. Okay. Okay. Ms. Hansen? Hello? Oh, there we are.
I'm up here. It, it, there's a delay when it takes you up.
I apologize. You, you have a little less time because we're at the end, so if you could just take a minute and a half.
I understand. So first and foremost, I'd like to say Salam Alayhim to the Arab, an Islamic community. I am an American Jew. I sent an email to the board. I hope that you all saw it and read it. I have very deep and many experiences with antisemitism, not so much here in Milton, but in other places, so much so that I have been chased down and beaten. Every, everyone on the panel today, yes, made excellent, excellent points for the Jewish community here in Milton, and I, you know, no one, no other Jewish person has been able to speak. The people that I have spoken to, the fact that, right after October 7th, people took to the streets waving the Palestinian flag, saying, "Death to Jews", "Death to Israel", on college campuses. Students were threatened with violence. There was a gentleman in California killed during a demonstration. I'm not blaming that on the flag, but I'm saying that there is violence.
I apologize. Hansen, we're, we're coming to the, the end here. We're, we're a little past the time.
So, okay, so I'm just going to say that I am not in favor of flying the Palestinian flag due to the marches and the rhetoric that has been going on across the country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hansen. For those additional residents who wanted to speak and were unable to, because we've come to the end of our time, certainly welcome to come back on November 28th, which is our next meeting, next regular meeting, public comment. And truly, that's what, that's what other, other speakers have done today. So we look forward to hearing from you on those subsequent occasions. Item three is discussion approval, request to place the Palestinian flag in the Baron Hugo gazebo alongside the Israeli flag, by reconsidering, reconsideration of flag placement and related statement by the Select Board. I have, I have listened with interest to my colleagues during the last two meetings. Tonight, I'm going to take the prerogative to speak first. At the outset, let me clarify, and some of it was clarified by one of our speakers, and correct some of the misstatements that were made during our prior meetings. The suggestion last Tuesday night about hanging the Palestinian flag was not made by Milton Muslim neighbors, which is a group with whom we have worked very successfully to initiate events in Milton. Those that made the suggestion about the Palestinian flag were not exclusively Muslim. They were a diverse group of residents who labeled themselves Milton residents in support of Palestinian rights. And the speakers were those of various faiths, including Christian, Jewish, Muslim. In their suggestion about a Palestinian flag was strongly supported by the rabbi of our local temple. So I want to apologize for any misstatements to the contrary. I will repeat my view that the primary purpose of our town government is to respond to the needs of our residents. I will leave it to others to make statements about the history of the Middle East, what is happening there now, and which flag means what, to whom, and why. Those things are beyond my expertise and way beyond the pay grade of this position. My focus has always been and will always be, for as long as I'm in this position, how best to respond to the needs of all residents. I believe that we did that in the immediate, in the immediate aftermath of October 7th, when we sought to express the town's support for those affected by that heinous act, by showing solidarity at the community event at the temple, by issuing a statement of support, and by the symbolic act of hanging the Israeli flag at the Baron Hugo gazebo. However, in the ensuing weeks, as circumstances changed, and as the ongoing violence in that part of the world broadened the impact on our residents, I believe that we overlooked certain residents in this town who didn't have a voice, particularly our Palestinian neighbors. For that, I am sorry. And my commitment is to make sure that it does not happen again. Those residents were finally given a voice last Tuesday by Milton residents in support of Palestinian rights, that diverse group that has sought nothing more than unity for our town and compromise. In considering whether to continue or modify the town's symbolic expression in the gazebo, including whether to hang the Palestinian flag, it seems apparent that to hang the two flags together, or either of them going forward, without any context for passersby or casual observers, could cause more harm than good in our community. As Rabbi Benjamin of our local congregation, Beth Shalom of the Blue Hills, has written, "Now is the time for more, to help people look forward to a shared vision for a hoped-for future." In addition, while that little gazebo has occasionally been used for government expression, it is not used as a public square for expression of all private viewpoints and all types of symbols. That has never been intended, it has never been done, and it should not change now. Therefore, my recommendation is that, effective immediately, only the American flag shall hang in the gazebo, and that it shall remain there until the end of November. In addition, we should work to schedule a community forum led by the Milton Interfaith clergy association to provide more inclusive and tangible support for all those affected by the horrors going on now in the Middle East. Now, the members have a draft statement to that effect, to explain this suggested action. So I will make a motion to adopt this statement and to instruct, and to instruct the town administration, to instruct the town administrator that effective immediately, only the American flag shall hang in the gazebo, and it shall remain there until the end of November.
I'll second that statement.
All right, motions were made, and seconded, discussion. Ms. Musto?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of points, I did look at this statement. This is the third statement. We just received it yesterday. I've looked at it. I would like to ask each of the members a question first. My question is, and, and I think we've heard it a lot from some of our emails, I would like to know from each member, before I go into the statement, if they will support hanging only the American flag or banner at the gazebo. And I would like to know from each member if they will support that, and also if we will be doing a policy statement about that. So I want to first ask each member if they can support that.
Well, I mean, I mean the motion, so I certainly support it. And then with respect to a policy rocks, and I think we'd have to, you know, spend time to develop, if we want to develop a policy on this, but I, I think it's a good idea.
It fits an open floor, Mr. Chair, to respond to the question.
Yes, Mr. Zoll, you, you have your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I neglected my duties for just a minute. Mr. Zoll.
Sorry. And we're also on Zoom, so it makes a little more difficult. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to respond to the, to the statement, I'm in favor of the statement. I seconded the, the motion. And I have expressed an interest in devising a policy for when and what might be displayed at the Baron Von Hugo gazebo. So I'm, I'm, I don't know if that answers your question, Ms. Musto, but that's my, that's my position. Oops. Sorry. Trying to mute.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In response to Member Musto's question, I do support hanging the American flag for the remainder of November. And also, Ms. Musto is on the policy committee with me, and I look forward to working with her to create a policy for the hanging of flags moving forward in the Baron Hugo gazebo.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I've listened intently. As the members know, we've received a lot of emails, probably more than, I think, any subject we ever gotten emails on. Without elaborating, this is obviously something that I'm keenly aware of. The one thing that we haven't talked about tonight, and the trouble that I have with this, which is why I can't vote to undo the vote that we took that remains in place for November, until November 30th, with the hanging of the Israeli flag, is very simple. The humanity and the difficulty and the pain and the loss associated with war has been found in every conflict in history. It's found today in Ukraine, it's found in Russia, in innocent, innocent Russian civilians that are killed. It's found in the Middle East, it's found in Syria, it's found in Iraq, where military bases of the US have been bombed repeatedly. It's clearly found in Palestine, Gaza, and the state of Israel. And I may have left a few. But we got to remember that part of the point that we hung the Israeli flag, it wasn't sympathy for the Israeli people, and it was not a lack of sympathy or humanity for the Palestinians, particularly those that live in Gaza. It was a statement against terrorism and hate. As I said on that night, that statement is no different than the statement we made as Americans after the attacks of 9/11, and no statement different than we made as Bostonians after the Marathon bombing of 2013. There is zero place in this world for hatred, for terrorism. And as much as, as it is sad on both sides, and the pain is felt across the board of anyone involved in this conflict, Israel is responding to an act of terror and hate. And given that, I can't vote to take the Israeli flag down till after the 30th. If this board wants to look at something afterwards, I'm fine with that. But I think we need to remember that anything could happen, anything that we may want to address. I wouldn't want to see us policy ourselves out of something. I have great sympathy, and I feel the pain of those speaking in support of Palestinians in Gaza tonight. But I've also read so much from others, and I cannot, not in any way, shape, or form. It's something professionally, I spent my whole life fighting against Tate. And outside of this community, I've been so privileged in my life. I spent three months at 9/11 back in 2001. I, as I've echoed before, I've been to both Palestine, the West Bank, into Israel. And I spent 10 days at the Marathon bombing, within an hour afterwards, as did many officers from the local police department on the communities around here. And so given that, I get your intent, but I cannot vote to remove the Israeli flag until after the 30th of November. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No. Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, computer troubles this evening. I'd like to make a motion that we move the previous question. I think continuing debate on this subject, we've all said our piece a number of different times. I don't think it's going to do anyone any good if we keep talking. I think we owe the town a quick decision on this. I think there's a clear path. I think, I've spoken with so many folks. I think the clear and right answer is to, is to put up the American flag. I think that we did the right thing when we put up the Israeli flag. But it's time to move the question. Let's be done. Let's have a decision on this. We don't need to spend another hour talking about the Middle East. This is not why we were elected. Thank you.
Ms. Musto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of comments about the statement, and also a few other comments that I'd like to say. The first one is, with regards to the statement, I did have a couple of changes.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt Ms. Musto, but I've made a motion. I asked to remove the question.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'd like to recognize the motion. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. The motion is to move the question, to have, to have a vote directly on this. I will say that I would like to, like to give a little bit more latitude on this for, for people to speak. Particularly, I don't think Ms. Musto has had the opportunity to, to finish what she had wanted to say. But, so that's my, my view on this, but I'm, but we can go ahead and conduct a vote if we wish. So a motion's been made, and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to move the question?
I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to withdraw the motion if Ms. Musto promises that she'll make some brief remarks, and then we'll be voting right afterwards. Otherwise, I'd keep the motion on the table.
Why, why don't we give, why don't we give Ms. Musto the opportunity to, to speak? And Ms. Bradley has her hand up, and then after that, we'll, we'll see if we'll have the, we'll have maybe a motion to move the question. Does that, does that work?
That's fine for me. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Musto, and then Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the latitude. So I did want to talk first about the statement, a couple of things, and a couple of things that I heard. With the statement, I don't know if you can take a look at this, Mr. Zullis?
I have.
To correct one of the lines, shorten it a bit, and add some language in, and based on the feeling of only the American flag. So the line in the second paragraph where it says, "It seems apparent, however, that to hang the two flags together, or either of them going forward, I would scratch without context and put in would cause more harm than good in our community." And then to that end, there shall be no flags or banners at the gazebo other than the American flag after November 30th, or however you want to do that. But that would be the change. And I do have a couple, I'll make them brief. I know Mr. Zoll wants to get going with this, but I do want to make a few brief comments. When we had the meeting the other night, I know in the spirit of what Mr. Zoll had said at the last meeting, that flags mean different things to different people, and I think we've heard some of that today. And he called for no flags at the gazebo, but tonight, it looks like he's leaving the door open for some discrepancy. And I think the reason we get into these issues is because we're going to be arbitrarily deciding some of this stuff. And I think that can be a problem going forward. The other thing I would say is that I think that some of the comments that I've received from people on some sides have been trying to paint me a certain way. And I do want to just clarify that I am somebody who respects everybody, and the comments I had said were comments we had received in emails to us. And I will reiterate this again, my thoughts and sympathies are with innocent civilians, no matter where they're from. And I want to make that clear. And I stand with both the Muslim community and the Jewish community, and stand against hatred, Islamophobia, and antisemitism. And I would fully, fully support any opportunity to bring people together. And I'd love to see something like a candlelight vigil to honor those in the conflict that have lost their lives on both sides, as well as the hostages that remain. And the one thing I will say is, you know, what we heard overwhelmingly from people as well was that flags, banners, whatever, can be, can be divisive to some in the community and interpreted different ways. I believe Mr. Zoll had mentioned that at a previous meeting regarding the peace flag. So I do think that's very important to note. And I do hope that you will consider those changes that I put forward with the statement. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Musto. My, my only thought on the, on the, on the, on the suggested changes is, I, I, you know, I, I think it's important to, to point out that, that without context, these hanging of the flags could cause, could cause harm. We don't know that it would, but it could. So I, 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 I think it's fine the way it is. And then on the second change, I don't think we should, in, in this statement, try to make a policy. I think that's really for the policy committee. And so, so for that, I would just suggest, let's just deal with this situation now, and then going forward, we can, we can have the policy committee. So I, I think, so I, I think it's, I think it works, certainly for me, the way it is. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I have a few brief comments. First of all, I support the statement as it's currently drafted. I do not support any changes to the statement that has been given to us since yesterday, and we had time to review it. So thank you for that. I, like Ms. Musto, have been painted in a way by some folks in the community that my tears and my emotions in the last meeting were unjustified. And I just wanted to say that it has to be possible to feel pain and empathy and tears in one community without denying it in another. There has to be that option. Because without that, we have no starting place. There has to be empathy for all sides. And so to those that personally attacked me, as folks have been personally attacking Ms. Musto, it is not okay. We are public servants. We are doing our best. And for me personally, I'm only speaking for myself, the emotions that I had that day were over the loss of innocent lives. It doesn't matter what side they're on. I don't care. There is no sides. These are lives that are being lost. And so excuse me, residents of Milton that didn't like my emotions, for being saddened that we have lost thousands of people. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Any further discussion on this? All right, it, it'll be roll call vote, since we were, we are hybrid. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the statement and instruct the town administrator to act in accordance with it as, as the motion provided. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
No.
Mr. Wells?
Very sadly, Mr. Chair, no, I cannot vote to, to support this motion at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Zulus, yes. Thank you all. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zulus, yes. Thank you all, and thank you all for attending. We will see you again tomorrow at eleven thirty.
Tomorrow.
We'll see you tomorrow. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.